This is Rick Hackitstaff. We are recording. You may begin.
Thank you, Rick. This is Commissioner Sam Libby, and I'm bringing now to order this November 9th, special session of the Boulder County Planning Commission. Due to COVID-19, this hearing is being held virtually today. Information on how to participate in the virtual hearing has been posted to the Oil and Gas webpage at www.boco.org/ oilgas. This is a public hearing on docket DC-19-0002 amendments to the Article 12 of the Land Use Code. There will be an opportunity to remotely provide public comment on the proposed regulations during the public hearing portion of this session. The speaker signup list will be posted in the chat, so you may see where you are in the order of speakers. Please do not use the chat of the Zoom meeting to make any comments on the regulations, as those comments will not be part of the public record. We ask that you reserve your comments and make them live during the public hearing, and you're always welcome to provide written comments by email to oilgascomment@bouldercounty.org. If you did not sign up to speak in advance, there will be an opportunity to sign up to speak in the chat after the staff presentation, and after those that have already signed up have spoken. In today's public hearing, we will first hear a staff presentation on the proposed regulations, and then we will take public testimony. No decision will be made today, and the Planning Commission will reserve our questions and any discussion until tomorrow's session at 4:00 PM. Tomorrow, we'll hold a public meeting, at which time we will either make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, or provide direction to staff to modify regulations. No additional public testimony will be taken on tomorrow, the 10th, and the link to tomorrow's public meeting at 4:00 PM will be posted to the Oil and Gas webpage. Again, that's www.boco.org/ oilgas. If any members of the public have any technical issues when joining the meeting, we request that you email CPPTechSupport@bouldercounty.org, or call 720-721-3534 for any immediate technical support. With those comments, we're going to start off by taking a roll call of the commissioners that are present. Do you can please respond that you're here after I call your name? Mark Bloomfield?
Mark, can you unmute?
Mark Bloomfield, you here? I'm sure you can hear us. Mark, can you say present if you're there? Okay, we'll come back. Sam Fitch?
Here.
And Goldfarb is absent. This is Sam Libby. Gavin McMillan?
Here.
Dan Hilton?
Here.
Todd Quigley?
Here.
Melanie Neskey?
Here.
And Leishon Gargano?
Here.
And Mark, you with us? All right. He's here. We'll continue on. A few reminders to my other planning commissioners. Please identify yourself before speaking and speak slowly and clearly. You can say this is Commissioner Libby, for example. There's no votes today. Any votes in the future will be roll call votes. Actually, there will be one vote today. Please keep your video on when possible during the hearing, and please remain on mute until you're ready to speak. And when you begin speaking, please identify yourself, as I said before, by saying this is Planning Commissioner Sam Libby. It may be helpful to keep your participant list open in Zoom. You can then see who's speaking. They're going to be highlighted or bolded in yellow. But before we get to the staff presentation, I'd like to make a motion to approve going into a future executive session for the Planning Commission. This will be to receive legal advice related to the proposed regulations under Section 24-6-4044B. This executive session will take place tomorrow, Tuesday, November 10th, at 3:00 PM. And I'll need a second on that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, with a second, I will take a roll call vote. Sam Fitch?
Yes.
Sam Libby, hi. Leishon Gargano?
Hi.
Melanie Neskey?
Hi.
Gavin McMillan?
Hi.
Mark Bloomfield?
Hi.
Dan Hilton?
Hi.
Todd Quigley?
Hi.
All right, the motion passes. Thank you all. All right, so we're going to move into the staff presentation, and I'm going to open the public hearing. This is a public hearing for docket DC-19-0002 amendments to Article 12 of the Land Use Code. We'll start off with the staff presentation, and then move on to public comments after that.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. This is Kim Sanchez. I'm Deputy Director of Planning from Community Planning and Permitting. And I am going to share my screen in order to begin the presentation that I'll be giving along with some of others on our Oil and Gas team who we'll introduce in just a moment. All right, let me know if you can see that. Yep, we can.
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you for joining us this afternoon, and thanks to members of the public who are joining us virtually for this public hearing. 2020 has certainly brought some challenges, so we really appreciate everybody being involved in this new virtual setting. So today, we are here for docket DC-190002, which are amendments related to Article 12 of the Land Use Code. These are proposed Land Use Code amendments that address oil and gas development, seismic testing, and companion changes to the land use code. So today's agenda is, first, we will start off with a staff presentation to summarize the main topic areas of the regulations. We know that these regulations are packed with many details, and we anticipate questions from the commissioners, and so we will be reconvening tomorrow for a public meeting in order to take those questions for you to have discussion and take action on the docket. So if you could just jot down questions as they come to you and reserve those until tomorrow, that will be the best way to do it. We will also have other staff from Public Health and our outside counsel, who's helped us with some of the technical air quality provisions that you see in the proposed regulations, who will be on hand tomorrow to help answer questions. Today, though, we will do a staff presentation and accept public comment at two minutes per speaker. So as I stated, I'm Kim Sanchez, Deputy Director from Community Planning and Permitting, and I'm the local governmental designee for Oil and Gas with the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. We're joined by Jasmine Ruddenberg, who's our Senior Planner, also in Community Planning and Permitting, as well as Kate Burke, who's a Senior Assistant County Attorney in the County Attorney's Office. So to start this off, why we are here is depicted by this picture. So you can see the yellow highlighted line is the county line between Boulder County and Weld County. So in recent years, we've seen a proliferation of oil and gas development take place across the county line, and in anticipation of feeling those same sort of pressures in the Wattenberg gas field, the county has really become far more actively engaged in this area of oil and gas development. Traditional zoning isn't the way that we can really address oil and gas development as we would other uses that are proposed in the county. Generally, we can separate industrial types of uses from residential types of uses through our zoning. However, we have the challenge of a severed mineral estate in the context of oil and gas, which means that the operator may have rights to minerals below the surface, and then would be allowed access to the surface. So that just complicates sort of how we approach oil and gas development in the county. Some of the changes that we've seen in the last 10 years also have been a shift towards large-scale and consolidated oil and gas facilities, so much larger types of facilities. Really, in the county, our largest oil and gas site is about a 2 to 4 well pad. What we're seeing really in recent years are movements towards well pads that are, that contain 20 to 30, up to 50 or more wells, so much larger facilities. Associated with those are higher intensity of the development and the associated impacts that go along with it. And resulting from that are concerns on the impacts that these facilities have on community, public health, and the environment. We've seen encroachments of oil and gas development into populated areas where they may be bumping against where folks live, play, and recreate. And there's also been some recent developments that show impacts on public health. As a result of all of that, there have been several rulemakings that have been initiated at the state. This is at the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission and the Air Quality Control Commission, namely, those were the Governor's Task Force Rulemaking, which we participated, and the ongoing Mission Change Rulemaking, which I'll get into in a little bit more detail next. So the way that the county has approached oil and gas is that we know that there's no one silver bullet to get at addressing the impacts. So back in 2012, we really developed this multi-pronged approach to addressing oil and gas impacts. And oil and gas regulations are one piece of that approach. So in addition to oil and gas regulations, which are subject of your purview today and moving forward, the county has also invested funding in studies and monitoring programs on the oil and gas impacts. We do inspections of our existing well facilities. The county supports many energy efficiency projects and programs. We're involved in a lot of legislative work, and we're deeply involved with the enactment and adoption of, and the development of SB 181. We have many court cases that are actually in play right now. And we've also been very actively involved in state rulemakings, both at the COGCC and the AQCC. So you can see the list of all of the rulemakings that we have been involved in. Right now, we are part of the Mission Change Rulemaking, and we are, Boulder County is, is part of an affiliated local government coalition, along with a bunch of other front-range communities that are coordinating in the efforts to participate at the state. I also want to recognize that our Public Health Department is really taking the lead on participating in state rulemakings at the AQCC, and they've been involved in several rulemakings related to Regulation 7. So those are related to leak detection and repair. They've been involved in one on oil and gas engines, pre-production, and early production monitoring, flowback vessels, Class II disposal wells, and annual emissions reporting, and also one on non-emitting pneumatic requirements. So just want to recognize their hard work and these efforts as well. So why we're here today is because of SB 19181. Senate Bill 19181, which is known as Protect Public Welfare and Oil and Gas Operations, was signed into law last April in 2018. And what this bill did is it really changed the playing field for oil and gas development. So instead of having a mission to foster oil and gas development in the state, what this did is it really flipped the prioritization to one that protects public health, public safety, health, welfare, and the environment and wildlife in the regulation of the oil and gas industry. SB 181 also strengthened local governments' authority to regulate oil and gas development. And as such, we needed to update the regulations that we had most recently updated in March of 2017. So as depicted on this slide, oops, excuse me, we had last updated our regulations, and some of you may have been involved in that effort in March of 2017. Before that, we had a set of regulations that was from 1994, and drastically needed updating to address the technologies and types of development that we were seeing in this day and age. In June of last year, the Board of County Commissioners authorized amendments to Article 12 of the Land Use Code so that we could reevaluate those 2017 regulations in light of SB 181. In June, later in June, on June 28th, they also enacted a moratorium in order for staff to work on those changes that are based on the new authorities granted by SB 181. And that moratorium was really put in place in order to not have, if we were to have gotten an application while we were working on our regulations, it would be subject to the 2017 regulations, and we want any applications that are submitted to Boulder County to be under the strongest and most updated set of rules. So we had a nice schedule laid out, and we're anticipating to begin those public proceedings in March. And as we all are well aware, COVID-19 hit, and we've been sort of struggling with the impacts from that pandemic. So as a result, we've changed the schedule, and here we are today, starting on the public proceedings for the proposed regulations. In the meantime, we've been continuing to work on the regulations. We've also been really actively participating in the Mission Change Rulemaking, which is really a five-day-a-week type of effort with a constantly changing schedule, and really needing to be on our toes to be able to review the changes that are being made and react to those and present at those hearings. We also want to recognize that many members of the public have also been engaged in those rulemakings, and so they will continue to be, that we tried to make the schedules not overlap, but really need to continue to move forward with our own regulations, since the schedule at COGCC has been extended. Consequently, our current moratorium is in effect through December 31st of this year. I'm not going to go over the entire bullet list on this slide, but I do want to just clarify that SB 181 granted additional authority to protect public health, safety, welfare in several different areas. They are listed here, and those are really sort of the main areas that we focused on for this particular update to our 2017 regulations. So today, we've researched lots of new areas of authority that were not previously included in our oil and gas regulations. Spent hundreds of hours of both legal and practical research into these changes to the provisions. We've had numerous internal staff meetings to discuss these ideas and the changes. We've collected comments from the public to consider in the changes. Related to the public comment, we held stakeholder discussions with environmental groups in Boulder County, neighborhood activist groups that have formed and industry representatives. We released the first draft of our regulations for public review on March 6th of this year. And then after receiving more public comment, we released a second draft incorporating some of the, some new changes on October 20th of 2020. The October 20th version of the regulations is what is before you today, and the set of regulations that was included in your staff memo. And again, all the while, we've been participating in the state rulemakings. I'm going to pass the baton to my colleague Kate Burke to talk to you about the legal landscape.
Good evening, Kate Burke. I'm with the Boulder County Attorney's Office. So prior to 2019, the defining feature of the legal landscape around local government regulation of oil and gas were two companion Supreme Court cases involving the city of Longmont and the city of Fort Collins, both of which held that local powers were preempted, fairly broadly preempted by state law. The city of Longmont had enacted a ban on fracking. The city of Fort Collins had enacted a five-year-long moratorium, and both of those were invalidated by the Colorado Supreme Court. And so that was the backdrop to which we had developed the 2017 version of our regulations. And then last year, as Kim said, SB 19181 changed that landscape, giving us the room, but also almost the duty, to revisit our 2017 regulations. So we have several specific new areas of authority that were not laid out for local governments before, including the citing of oil and gas development, authority over the water source for fracking in particular, excuse me, authority over vibration caused by oil and gas development, and authority over financial assurances from the operators. It also gave us some specific new powers, including the power to inspect and to impose fines and penalties. So these are all specific elements that we needed to add into the regs that had not existed before. And then the other thing about 181 is it has a very clear statement that there will be no land use preemption, meaning that as long as local governments are acting within their land use authority within the areas granted to them by 181 or other statutes, they will not be preempted by state law. And so again, that changes, that pretty significantly changes the context that we had under the Longmont and Fort Collins cases alone. You want to change it, Kim? And so under under 181, there are some kind of parameters on our authority. We have authority over the surface impacts of oil and gas and for land use matters. And our regulations must be necessary and reasonable to protect the public health, safety, welfare, and the environment and wildlife. And I want to point out that just last week, on November 1st, actually, the Boulder County District Court issued the preliminary ruling in Our Health, Our Future, Our Longmont case. That case was examining whether Longmont's fracking ban that had been invalidated in 2016 would now be a valid use of authority under the new landscape of 181. The Boulder County District Court just said on November 1st that it is not, that 181 does not allow for the Longmont fracking ban. I understand that case will likely be appealed, so it'll be a while before we get final answers, but that's an important thing for us to be keeping in mind today.
All right, so now we'll move into our summary on the proposed regulations. I think, starting off, we will begin with Jasmine Ruddenberg.
Hi, everyone. Jasmine with Community Planning and Permitting. So let's just dive into some of the regulations. So the first piece of note is operator registration and renewal. This is modified from the current code, and requires that all operators have to have a current registration, and it must also be valid before they can apply for any special use review. And this registration has to be renewed annually. Some key requirements that operators will have to submit when registering with the county is a map of all of their mineral rights, instances of violations of state, federal, and local requirements in the past 10 years, lists of all incidents such as accidents, spills, or releases in the past 10 years, and information on the financial fitness of the operator. And the financial fitness piece will be discussed a little bit later. So another part of the regulations is the pre-existing facilities. There's broader inspection and enforcement authority for Boulder County now for the pre-existing oil and gas facilities. So some key components of this part of the regulations is that there will be an inspection requirements for a lot of the operators of pre-existing facilities. There will be spill, leak, and release reporting requirements. There will also be noise and odor limitations. An emergency response plan will be required, which basically outlines what the operator will have to do in the event of an emergency at those pre-existing facilities. And there will be revegetation and reclamation requirements, as well as stormwater quality control requirements. Another section of expanded authority for Boulder County is in well and pipeline abandonment and decommissioning. So here, we emphasize that the flow lines must be removed unless otherwise authorized by the director in consultation with the landowner. So it prioritizes removal of flow lines rather than keeping them in the ground. And this section also allows staff to impose conditions of approval for any well or pipeline that's going to be abandoned or decommissioned. Some of these include timing constraints, so in the event that there are wildlife issues or things like that, Boulder County can dictate the timing of the removal or abandonment. There can be a tracer for pipelines abandoned in place and revegetation and reclamation requirements. All right, and then another section that is entirely new from the old regulations is about seismic testing. And so seismic testing is also known as geophysical exploration. And so a permit will be required before any geophysical exploration activities are conducted. And this permit, some of the requirements for getting a permit include submitting a comprehensive vibration monitoring and control plan, which essentially outlines how, when, and where the geophysical exploration happens. There will be a prohibition of methods involving explosive materials, also known as shot holes. So the method that will, is most commonly used, that will be regulated, is basically using thumper trucks. And so they go around and thump the ground to kind of see where there's potential for drilling for oil and gas. Seismic testing applications will require some insurance, and there will be notice to nearby property owners, which will include an offer of baseline condition and post-testing condition inspections to kind of get a look at what, if a property owner wants that, what conditions exist for a house's foundation or things like that before the seismic testing, and then also afterwards.
All right, so the special use review, or the special review process will follow somewhat of a similar review structure that you are used to in dockets that you see. Basically, there's a pre-application conference. After that, an operator would submit their application. Staff would take a look at all of the materials that they have submitted and determine if we have a complete application. We would require notice to surface owners to the physical address, meaning tenants would also be notified if the owner on record doesn't actually reside at the location that is near the oil and gas facility, and to water source owners. And notice would be provided to all of those folks within one mile of a proposed oil and gas facility. Also require signage to be posted on the proposed site where the facility is to be located. A neighborhood meeting is required with adjacent and surrounding landowners, as well as any other interested parties who are interested in attending this meeting. So it's not just limited to people that would be directly impacted, but to any interested folks in the county who wish to attend. We would send referrals of the application, once it's completed, to all of the departments and agencies that might be able to provide us with input. We have the ability to obtain technical consultants if we're needed for some of the really specific types of reports that we are requiring through the application supplemental requirements. Staff conducts a site visit. It goes to a Planning Commission public hearing for the Planning Commission to provide a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. There's also opportunity for a Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee public hearing if the wells are on or near county open space. And then it ends with a Board of County Commissioners public hearing as they are the final decision-makers on any application. The application requirements are very hearty. We've asked for a lot of information, because we think there are a lot of things that need to be analyzed for an oil and gas facility. So we intend to have a high level of scrutiny on these types of applications, and there are a number of impacts that we're interested in analyzing. This lists some of them. We do want verification of all rights, whether that's mineral rights, rights to surface use, or roads. There's some requirements for insurance coverage. We have 16 different maps and information on current conditions, sort of baseline conditions at the proposed location. We also have asked for the operator to provide the rationale behind choosing the selected site with respect to other locations, so sort of understanding of why they've picked this site over alternative sites. We've asked for very detailed information on the proposed facility itself. So on the site where the facility is proposed, what does that look like, and what equipment is included? Assessment, studies, and plans from independent experts will be required. And all of these are intended to get at how to avoid, mitigate, and minimize the impacts of the of the oil and gas facility. The review standards are listed in 12,1000 of the proposed regulations. The review standards are really our tool to analyze and evaluate the proposed facility. We will do this individually for the proposed facility, as well as in light of any resulting cumulative impacts. The applicant will bear the burden of proof for showing that the oil and gas operation or facility meets the standard. And the proposal would meet the standard if it avoids adverse impacts to public health, safety, welfare, the environment, and wildlife resources, or through the imposition of conditions of approval will sufficiently minimize and mitigate unavoidable impacts. The review standards are also numerous, and so they look at a variety of different types of impacts that could be associated with an oil and gas facility, highlighted some of the new ones here. So, you know, of course, we continue to be concerned about things like air quality and impacts on agricultural land, whether something's in the floodplain or floodway. Floodway is actually prohibited, but we've added some new, new provisions in looking at the water use, the water source, where it's coming from and how that impacts sort of that overall picture of water. Financial fitness, noise and vibration are two interesting ones, as well as odor. We've conducted some initial 24-hour noise tests in eastern Boulder County to determine existing noise levels where we would anticipate oil and gas development if we were to get some. We just received those results and are reviewing them, and they will help guide us in completing the noise level standards, which we'll be able to do shortly after these hearings. So you did see that there was a blank in, in those provisions, but the public will be able to comment on the new standards prior to the Board of County Commissioners hearings when we have a draft that goes forward to them. Also of interest is a new provision around setbacks. So this is one that we got a lot of public comment on from the interested folks that have given us comments on the proposed regulations. And this has also been a, a high interest topic at the state rulemaking. So what we've incorporated into our regulations are a 2,000-foot setback from an existing dwelling and related residential uses, and also a 2,000-foot setback from any educational facility or licensed childcare center. And that's from the, the well pad to those, those uses as listed. So new provision there that we, we hope think folks will be happy with. Conditions of approval, the, the board may impose and the planning commission may recommend specific conditions of approval to ensure compliance with the review standards. You know, underlying all of this, if conditions can't be devised to make the proposed development protective, there is the ability to deny an application. Again, there is a huge list of potential conditions of approval that we could anticipate requiring with an oil and gas facility. Those are, some of the highlights are, you know, looking at the specific location, the number of wells, the scope of it, the pad dimensions, the timing of the project, of the different phases. Lots of really detailed and aggressive provisions around hydrocarbon emission controls and other related measures. We have some water quality provisions that includes monitoring and well and water source testing. Also added in a prohibition of toxic chemicals in fracking fluids. We have conditions that would address spills, leaks, and releases, compliance with emergency response plan. Provisions that address noise, odor, lighting, dust, traffic, transportation, infrastructure, many of the nuisance impacts and related development impacts that come along with an oil and gas facility. And then provisions around financial assurances, which Kate Burke will explain in more detail next.
Okay. Financial assurances, this is a new area of authority that 181 expressly granted to local governments. And we've talked a great deal about this. We have put that to work for us in three different places. First, in operator's initial registration with the county, which shows up in 12,412, 500. We've asked for audited financial documents for the past five years to get a sense of the operator's current financial condition. And this would be important for us as we consider financial securities, which are at the bottom, and I'll get to that in just a second. That's important background information for us. And then we revised our insurance requirements that are one of the application submittals into the 12,900 section. And we worked with our, the countywide risk office to develop appropriate levels of insurance coverage for oil and gas operators. And you can see the numbers there. And then in 12,900, we, so financial securities are bonds, for example, or letters of credit, various kinds of pledges by which the operator provides financial backing to its, to guarantee that it will comply with the conditions of approval for the project throughout the final reclamation. And the way that works in the regulations is there on a case-by-case basis, depending on the type of project being proposed, the status and size and sort of financial fitness of the operator at the time and, and whatever other considerations are necessary. These are all things that the county will probably be looking to hire experts to help in the analysis because they are very, you know, fairly specialized areas of, of information. And then some other enforcement tools that we have, we have a new or an enhanced section on inspections and violations. So the county has the right to enter and inspect for compliance on new oil and gas projects and, and existing ones. And that would be coordinated with the landowner and the operator, but it's an important aspect of our ability to enforce our, our, the conditions that we've put on any approvals. And then there's also a provision that's based on state statute that says that if the COGCC fails to enforce its own rules, then there's a process by which the county can actually, we have to go through several steps, but we can actually file our own lawsuit on that if that were to ever occur. Then we have a section on fines and penalties that's in 12,1500. And it's a wide range. It's from $300 to $15,000 per day, depending on the violation. And the reason that range is wide is because there are various statutes that apply to certain areas in which we might impose fines that put limits. So that again, would be a case-by-case basis, depending on what our statutory powers are and what the violation was, the nature and severity of it, that kind of thing. And then we also included some non-financial penalties in 12,1400, including, for example, increased reporting schedules, increased inspections, and all the way up to a stop-work order in particular circumstances. Do you want me to speak to that, Kim? We, during the course of, what's, oh, Jasmine, okay.
Yeah. That's all right. I couldn't find my unmute button fast enough. Um, so public comment, we've received hundreds of public comments over the past few months, and those are posted on the county's oil and gas website. And I do want to make a note that the posting to the oil and gas website, it's not, you know, like live as a comment comes in, it just gets immediately posted. Those get posted in batches as we can. So if you sent a comment recently and it's not necessarily up on the oil and gas website, it will be. The, a lot of the comments had some great suggestions in there, and we've appreciated and reviewed all of those thoroughly. We've implemented several of the suggestions that came through, including minimum setback, clarification on the county's ability to deny applications that don't meet the minimum requirements, and there are numerous in-text clarifications and edits that are too numerous to list here. If there are additional public comments, those can be submitted by email to oilgascomment@bouldercounty.org.
So our schedule moving forward is posted right here, and it is also on the oil and gas webpage. This is your first public hearing. We'll reconvene tomorrow and the rest of it follows. I did want to make a note that in the staff report on Tuesday, December 3rd, the, the start time was posted at 5:00 PM. That was just a typo. It does start at 4:00 PM. Moving forward, all, all public hearings and public meetings will begin at 4:00 PM. And they were, they were legally noticed as such. It was just a typo in, in the memo. So again, if there are questions that people have, we have a ton of information on the Boulder County oil and gas website. The URL is down, highlighted in yellow. We encourage folks to sign up for oil and gas news updates. You'll get all of our press releases or pushes of information that we send out to people that have indicated that they're interested in oil and gas efforts and activities taking place in Boulder County. This would also discuss any schedule changes if there were to be any. And then I lastly wanted to sort of end on, on giving a plug on kind of walking the talk. So the, the county, the county has been really committed to, to clean energy for a long time. We're a founding member of the Colorado Communities for Climate Action, which helps adopt climate policies, including best practices that help make it easier and a smoother process for residents to go solar. We have adopted solar-friendly permitting and building codes to support energy efficiency and renewable energy. And then I just want to plug some of the specific programs that members of the public who are watching this, who are concerned with our reliance on fossil fuels, might want to take a close look at to, you know, help address being part of the solution here. So there is an Energy Smart and Partners for Clean Environment provides residences and businesses consulting to encourage action. We have about 60% of Boulder County businesses in that program and about 19,000 households. So again, this is to fuel switch your house from natural gas to alternative energies through Energy Smart Comfort 365. We also partner with Elevation's Credit Union and another credit union to offer home energy loan, which can be used for a number of upgrades listed there. And those can be combined with Energy Smart rebates in order to fund your energy efficiency upgrade. So encourage people to look at the website there. It's under the, the Boulder County Sustainability webpage and things that you can do to actively participate in addressing some of the, the background to what we're talking about here today. So in final, we do find that the land use code amendments meet the criteria in Article 16,100 of the land use code. And we're recommending that the planning commission approve and recommend approval of this docket to the Board of County Commissioners. We do have one modification that needs to be made to the regulations that are in front of you in the accompanying regulations to Article 12. There were some provisions in seven, Article 7,904, and we just need to strike that entire oil and gas exemption from obtaining a stormwater quality permit. This is necessary in order for Boulder County to be in compliance with our MS4 permit. We can provide, you know, more background if you have questions on that tomorrow, when you have your questions and discussion. But that concludes our staff presentation. And again, we ask you to reserve your questions until tomorrow, just so we can get to the members of the public who have signed up to speak in front of you today. Thanks very much.
Okay. Thank you to staff. All right. We're now ready to move on to the public hearing. And we'll be moving into public comment. Please direct any of your comments or questions to planning commission, the chair, or the commissioners will not be answering any questions today, but we will be directing them to staff tomorrow as appropriate in tomorrow's discussion. Once we've heard all public testimony, we will close the public hearing and we'll adjourn to reconvene for discussion tomorrow at 4:00 PM. All members of the public who wish to will have a chance to speak, even if you didn't sign up ahead of time. We'll allow those that have signed up in advance to speak first in the order they've signed up. And once those who've signed up in advance have finished speaking, anyone else who wishes to speak will be allowed to. If you've joined the Zoom meeting from your computer, you can sign up to speak by typing your first name, last name, and address in the chat box. Staff will then take that down and add you to the list. And then when it's your turn to speak, the staff will promote you to being a speaker. Please unmute yourself at that time so that you can begin to give your comments. If you'd like to show your face as you speak, you can turn on your video camera, though you're not required to. And then once you're finished speaking, we'll move you back to being the attendee, move on to the next speaker. If you've joined the meeting by phone, when we call on you for your time, or if you've like, you'd like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad. The host and staff will unmute you and let you speak when it's your turn. And again, please do not submit or make any comments or questions in the chat box during the meeting. This is only for speaker signup. Please remain on mute until it's your time to provide comment. And please note the public is not allowed to share screens or give PowerPoint presentations during the public comment session. All right. So we will now move into our list. And as a reminder on timing, each speaker will have two minutes to speak. If you've pulled time, you can have up to eight minutes for four contributors to that pool. We'll be checking that everyone's present from that pooled time when we go to, to that person to speak. And then there will be a noise at the end of the two minutes that's played over the audio, so you know your time has expired and we'll ask you to close your comments then. And are we all set with the timer and the noise, Rick?
This is Rick Hackettstaff. I'll play an example of what the timer will sound like when your speaking time is up.
Thank you. I'm going to be reading a couple of names ahead of time so people know when they're coming up on the list. And again, please feel free to sign up if you'd like to speak. We're going to be starting with Chris McGowan, followed by Ramesh Bat and Mariah Conroy. So Chris, are you here? And if you're on the phone, you can, I think, unmute yourself with star nine. Yep.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yep. And I just, I forgot to mention, if everybody can just please state their full name and address when they start speaking, that'd be great. Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, appreciate it. My name is Chris McGowan. I work for the American Petroleum Institute in Colorado. We are 1660 Broadway in Denver, Colorado. Good afternoon. I know it's late. My name is Chris McGowan, and again, I represent the American Petroleum Institute here in Colorado. We really appreciate the opportunity to comment on Boulder County's proposed oil and gas regulation. API Colorado is a division of the American Petroleum Institute, which represents all facets of the natural gas and oil industry. Our more than 600 members produce, process, and distribute most of the nation's energy. In our first 100 years, API has developed more than 700 standards to enhance operations and environmental safety, efficiency, and sustainability. API Colorado is committed to ensuring a strong, viable industry capable of meeting the energy needs of the state in safe and environmentally responsible manner. API and its member companies have always enjoyed a very positive, collaborative, and engaging relationship with the communities across the Front Range. In Colorado alone, we have continuously come to the table in local jurisdictions to find collaborative solutions to complex issues. This is also true in Boulder, where operators have worked diligently to address many county and constituent issues. However, we have some serious concerns regarding your proposed regulations. Many of our significant outstanding concerns are your proposed provisions are subjective, overly broad, or simply neither necessary nor reasonable. We have made specific notations to those in the red line we submitted to the county. As you are aware, land use decisions must not be arbitrary or capricious in nature. We feel many, if, if not many of these provisions, especially if used to deny a permit application, would constitute such an arbitrary and capricious decision. Additionally, many of these standards are duplicative or work in concert to effectively prohibit the development of private mineral rights. Finally, we have noted several significant concerns regarding the county's desire to regulate subsurface activities or attempt to require applicants to disclose proprietary business information that is wholly unrelated to an operator's permit application. We would encourage Boulder County to sit down and discuss their proposal with industry representatives. While Senate Bill 181 granted the county more authority to regulate oil and gas, it did not allow the county to ban development. The cumulative impacts of this regulatory proposal likely constitutes such an action. We look forward to continuing this conversation and are always available to discuss any questions the county may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Ramesh Bat.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. So my name is Ramesh Bat, and, and I live at 2421 Briarwood Drive in Boulder. I'm speaking today on behalf of the approximately 10,000 Boulder County residents who are members and supporters of the Sierra Club. We thank the city staff for the latest iteration of Article 12, which we believe is stronger than the earlier version. However, we also feel that the regulations could be improved with more stringent standards and greater clarity. First, the rules now say that fracking operations cannot compromise our ozone non-attainment or increase particulate pollution. While this is good, unfortunately, similar clear language is missing when it comes While this is good, unfortunately, similar clear language is missing when it comes to other toxic emissions. By now, a long list of chemicals that affect human health has been identified as originating from fracking operations. A recent paper from Harvard even suggests that fracking leads to increased radiation as far away as 20 miles downstream. Please strengthen the rules to explicitly protect our community against all such dangers. Second, Boulder County has declared a climate emergency and is already experiencing the effects of climate disruption in the form of fires, floods, etc. We all know that fracking operations and the products that they generate contribute to climate change. It's just disappointing to see very little mention of climate change in the rules. We request that you modify the rules to require operators to buy offsets or in some other way ensure that their operation and their products do not result in a net increase in greenhouse gas emissions. Third, over the years, Boulder County residents have spent over $500 million to purchase and protect open space. It would be a major wasted opportunity for the county to not use its authority to protect them. Fracking operations should be prohibited on open space and kept away from at least 2,000 feet from their boundaries. Senate Bill 181 demands that wildlife and biological resources be protected as much as human health and welfare. So there should be no hesitation in strictly protecting open space. Finally, we feel that language is unnecessarily tentative in some places. For example, I will stop because I've reached the two second. But anyway, thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Next is Maria Conroy and Lynn Segal will be after.
This is Anna Moller staff. I'm not seeing Maria in our participant list. Maria, if you're dialed in via phone, can you please press star nine to raise your hands that we know that you're.
Okay, we can come back if she does come in. Lynn Segal. So we're also missing Lynn Segal, Anna.
That looks correct to me.
Okay. Next would be Kate Merlin and then Michael Denzlow will be after Kate.
Hi, my name is Kate Merlin. Thank you so much for taking my comments today.
Give your address, Kate, please. Sorry.
Yes, 479 Arapahoe Avenue, Boulder, Colorado. As I say, my name is Kate Merlin. I am a local resident and I'm also an environmental advocate and an attorney. I'm often making comments at rulemaking hearings, but this one's a little personal to me. I want to thank you. I think your proposed rules are very thoughtful. I would suggest that they're very modest. And I think you can go farther in a few areas that would substantially improve public safety. So these are my suggestions. First, your proposed rules don't appear to have setbacks from trails and recreational areas, bike paths. I see that adverse, avoiding adverse impacts is required. But I think it would substantially improve public safety to actually physically move some of these facilities, which can be quite large and intrusive, away from these areas where people are trying to recreate. Furthermore, there was no, that I could see requirement for them to analyze communities that may have a single ingress and egress point during the COGCC rulemaking hearings. People testified that they lived in a community in Western Colorado where an oil facility was placed very close to the road. It was the sole ingress and egress point from their community, placing them in danger if a fire were to occur. I'd like to suggest that while your noise, I understand your noise study is ongoing, your rules do not describe how operators will measure the noise pollution. And I think that this requires a little more specificity to ensure that accurate measurements are taken. Finally, the dilution of air odor with five or more volumes of air, an upper limit of dilution is not defined. Thank you so much for taking my comments tonight.
Thank you. Michael Denzlow.
Hi, you can hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Michael Denzlow. I live in Eastern Boulder County. The new oil and gas, sorry, the new Colorado oil and gas rules are the minimum. It is my expectation that Boulder County will have the strongest possible regulations in the state of Colorado. Article 12 should have stronger requirements for dangerous incidents such as spills, fires, explosions, and should not rely on current state reporting procedures. On December 9th, 2019, there was a fire at Prestones Regnar site just over the, just on the other side of County Line Road. In addition to the planetary destruction this site causes on a daily basis, this fire tragically sent seven people to the hospital with injuries. The current requirements for reportable incidents are covered under COGCC rules and Department of Labor rules under OSHA. These rules basically require operators to self-report incidents. The Regnar incident report contains a shocking lack of detail as to the cause and remedy for this fire. It is two sentences long and can't by any objective assessment be considered adequate for an incident of this magnitude. There's apparently another report that can be obtained from OSHA, but I have yet to obtain it. This is not from lack of trying. To summarize, the state's current reporting rules do not provide enough transparency or detail to be meaningful. Therefore, there is a real question as to whether having operators self-report is sufficient to provide even basic level of information to impacted residents. Since we do not have a ban, we can only hope that Article 12 will be strong enough to prevent additional oil and gas infrastructure in Boulder County. However, it is worth noting that Boulder has hundreds of operating wells already in production. It is important that Article 12 also put more stringent requirements on existing oil and gas sites. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next will be Tricia Olson, followed by Ryan Seestrom. Reminder to please share your address with your full name. And Tricia, do we have you? You have to unmute still. Tricia, if you're there, we can't hear you. If you can unmute in Zoom. We're supposed to move on and come back to you. Okay, Ryan, are you ready?
Yes, I am. Can you guys hear me? Okay?
Yep, go ahead.
Wonderful. Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Ryan Seestrom and I'm the Regulatory Affairs Manager with the Colorado Oil and Gas Association, located at 1800 Glutarm Place in Denver. I appreciate the opportunity to address you this afternoon regarding the county's proposed oil and gas regulations. As you are aware, Senate Bill 19-181 gave local governments broader authority to regulate oil and gas development while continuing to protect public health, safety, welfare, wildlife, and the environment. However, any regulations implemented must also be reasonable and necessary. COGA submits that many of the provisions in the draft code are neither. And I will refer you to the comments in our red lines submitted earlier today for more detail. Some of our biggest concerns center around the requirements for operators with pre-existing facilities, registration requirements, and fines and penalties. Most, if not all, of the existing wells in Boulder County are older legacy wells. It is unclear why the county is requesting a decade's worth of information for operators to continue operating facilities within the county that they themselves have been there for decades. What does the county intend to do with such information? Please also confirm that this information is for Colorado facilities only and does not apply to operations outside the state. COGA also wishes to see the confidentiality provisions altered. COGA suggests that the county and operator discuss the confidentiality of certain documents before they are submitted, rather than staff making the determination after the fact. As currently written, the county is requesting sensitive and in some cases, private financial and other business or operations information. It is again unclear why the county is requesting this information, especially for pre-existing facilities. I encourage staff to work with industry to create regulations that work for the county and also continue to allow for the safe and compliant operation of facilities that are currently in Boulder County. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Maya Bovino, followed by Lillian McClellan. Maya?
Hi, my name is Maya Bovino. I'm a senior at Niwot High School and I live at 984 Pingley Road, Netherland, Colorado. As an intern with 350 Colorado, I have reviewed the proposed regulations on oil and gas extraction. And as stated by the county, the objective is to protect public health, safety, welfare, the environment, and wildlife to the maximum extent permitted by law, to the maximum extent. To me, this means implementing regulations that, if not in name, in effect thwart the development of all oil and gas extraction sites in Boulder County. I appreciate Boulder County's steps thus far in drafting the regulations, especially as they do not include waivers for extraction companies. However, there is undoubtedly work to be done to make these regulations protect people and the environment to the maximum extent. First and foremost, the term "climate change" is mentioned a total of one time within the proposed regulations. This year, Colorado has faced three of the largest wildfires in recorded state history. We are in the midst of a climate crisis and it is time we start acting like it. Fossil fuels are the leading driver of climate change. It is imperative that we stop them immediately, starting where we have the opportunity currently in Boulder County. Next, if Boulder County truly plans to protect people and the environment to the maximum extent possible, the setbacks simply must be larger. Scientific studies supports the conclusion that 2,500-foot setbacks are on the lower end of what constitutes a safe distance from fracking sites. Thus, I demand not only that Boulder increase the setback distance to 2,500 feet at a minimum, but also that open space be included in addition to any structure intended for human occupancy. Remember, the protection of wildlife is included within the county's mission statement, in addition to that of humans and the environment. Though today, my peers and I speak to protect our Niwot community from the proposed Prestone project, our motivation in demanding an end to oil and gas extraction is far more deeply rooted. We demand to end all fracking because our future and the future of the planet rely on it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And Lillian McClellan is next. And William, if you're on the phone, if you can press star nine, I think, right, Anna?
Star six.
Star six. Star six, please, Lillian. We have you now.
Hi, my name is Lillian McClellan. I'm a sophomore at Niwot High School and I live at 920 Kane Drive, Longmont, Colorado. For as long as I can remember, I've been passionate about the environment and our effects on it. I've always loved to go outside and do activities such as hiking and riding my bike. However, in the past few years, these activities have become harder to enjoy. I have problems with my lungs and the pollution and poor air quality that we face daily do not help. Fracking has major negative impacts on the environment. There have been numerous studies that link fracking to various harmful effects on health. These include heart defects among children born to women who live near fracking sites, reduced cognitive performance, and increased risk of heart disease and cancer. These are only a few of the known effects. Reports from NOAA about atmospheric methane levels show that the year from 2018 to 2019 had the largest increase in atmospheric methane since 2012. Research has shown that oil and gas companies contribute significantly to ozone levels on the Front Range. I, along with other members of Niwot Environmental Club, care significantly about this fracking proposal. I believe we eventually need a ban on fracking. I understand that it will take time to shift away from fracking, but we need to start somewhere. This proposed site is only three miles from our school and that terrifies me. It could be incredibly, it would be incredibly irresponsible for us to ignore the science regarding fracking. Our time to step up and make changes is now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Stephanie Mo.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Mao. I'm a sophomore now at high school and I live at 4923 Bella Vista Drive, Longmont, Colorado. When I was deciding which club I choose to join this year, the Environmental Club was not one of my top options. Why? Because as 2020 unfolded into a year full of unpredictability and fright, I didn't think that the environment would be something to worry about. Soon, however, I watched as the fire spread, first on the West Coast and then in our own backyard, sending hundreds and thousands of people out of their homes. That's when I joined Niwot High School's Environmental Club. I didn't join the club because I believed that I could change the world. I joined the club so I could learn about the world. The second meeting or leader told us that there was a plan to build a fracking site only a few miles from our school. This news not only surprised me, but it frightened me. This new site would threaten my community's health by releasing methane into the atmosphere and even cancer-causing carcinogens. But I'm not here to throw facts at you about how fracking is going to affect health, wildlife, or water. You get enough of that already. You see, I was always told when I was younger, you're our future. And it's true. One day, all my fellow classmates and I will be the leaders of our society and community. If 2020 has taught me anything, it's that I have a voice and I shouldn't be afraid to stand up and use it. Fracking may be a beneficial thing now, but in the future, when colorful Colorado is filled with burnt-down forests, it's because of the decisions we make today. I'm so proud to be born in such a beautiful state where I can go hiking in the summer and skiing in the winter, and I doubt any of us would like those amazing things taken away. I've learned so much about the environment in the past few months, and the more I learn, the more I realize how little time we have to save our world. And as technology improves, we know there are other options to getting our energy. Fracking is such a huge contributor to the climate change and it's a part of the reason welfare have emerged in our country only a few weeks ago. I'm here asking you on behalf of my entire generation to find a way to ban fracking. You may be a small county in this giant world, but banning fracking and preventing the development of 140 proposed fracking wells will make a huge difference to the thousands of citizens who live in this part of Colorado. The more steps we take for a brighter future, the closer we get to saving our world. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next will be Daniela Garcia, followed by Victor Gerber and Ann Toll. Daniela?
Hello, my name is Daniela Garcia. I'm a freshman at Niwot High School. I'm here to talk about Chris Stone's plan to frac three miles away from my school. At my old school, which was Carbon Bi Academy, there are many fracking sites around the town and the school. On the middle school wing, we would not drink the water found. It was gray, it had specks, it tasted funny, and it made people sick. Those who drank the water were lucky enough not to get sick enough to go to the hospital and then not go back to drinking the water ever again. This was due to the fracking around the school. There, when we, when, when will we as people realize life is a powerful and precious thing? And the want for power and money is not an excuse to rip away the right of life. I am not here to buy choice, but because the problem has been forced onto my generation and myself and the people who care for others and for the earth we live in. We are Earth's guests and we are being disrespectful by destroying her. It will not work. If, if we will not think of Earth, we must think of others and ourselves. We do not have a long time to fix what we have already messed up, less than 10 years. Do not add on to this by continuing fracking. Let, let the commissioners know that we are relying on them to protect our health and the health of the earth. We can't, they can't make the right choice and by ending, and fracking now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Victor Gerber?
My name is Victor Gerber. I'm a junior at Niwot High School and I live at 910 Platter Road in Longmont, Colorado. I have struggled with chronic asthma for much of my life and experiencing several severe attacks have shown me how important respiratory health is. Air pollution is a significant global health problem and has been identified as contributing to 8.8 million deaths annually. Furthermore, it has been linked to higher mortality rates from viral infectious diseases, which is alarming when considering that we're currently in the middle of a pandemic of one such disease. Fracking is notorious for generating air pollution and as such poses a significant threat to public health. Oil and gas extraction is linked to the production of ozone precursors, which contributed more dramatically to high ozone days in the Front Range area than the Denver metro area did, according to experts quoted on the Boulder County website on air quality. Ozone has been linked to lung damage and worsened asthma in people with sensitivities and chest pains, even in people without them. In light of the threat it poses to public health, I strongly urge Boulder County to adopt even more stringent measures to protect public health and the environment. It is critical that setbacks are no less than 2,500 feet between oil and gas operations and any structures intended for human occupancy, open space, and water resources. Furthermore, oil and gas companies must be required to entirely avoid endangering public health, the environment, and wildlife resources, rather than to merely minimize it as currently stipulated by Section 12 1000. The discretionary conditions listed in Section 12 1100 must be converted to mandatory conditions such as prohibition of venting or flowing natural gas, continuous monitoring of leaks, and requirement of closed-loop pitless drilling systems to allow for the reuse of produced water. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Ann Toll and Josh Lidske will be after.
Ann Toll, 836 55th Boulder, and Incorporated Boulder County. Thank you, youth and young adults, for reminding us we're making plans for the next 150 years or so. I've been here since college in the 80s, 70s. I've been here since college in the 80s, 70s. I've watched our population grow. We're 63% in population in Boulder County above where we were when I graduated and decided to stay here and raise my family. I'm gonna bounce around a little bit. I looked over the regulations. I grew up on the western slope. A lot of it's dry land out there, and there's a lot of permits out there, too. Section 12-800, applications. I think all these applications should be posted online, 100%, so that everybody who's interested can see them from the very beginning. They should be, if permits are accepted, and I think the criteria are high and they should be higher. I think that there should be a permanent record accessible online for any permits that we go ahead and allow. Section 900, $25 million policy. Is that per well? Section 12-8, let's see, there's another one. On the insurance that the applicants have to submit, are the contractors covered at very high levels? Because these companies change names frequently. They're parent and children organizations. It's hard to track, and it's important. We should be protecting dry creek beds also. We have a lot of those in western Colorado. Special review processes. Everything should be permanent record online once the special review process is done. Neighborhood notices should be included. Online should be given. Thank you, everybody. Great staff effort so far. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you for your comments. Josh, I'm gonna have you pause for a second. Sorry, we're gonna go back to somebody who we missed earlier. Tricia, I think you're with us now to speak. If you can press star six to unmute and give your name and address.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Tricia Olson, and I live at 7446 Park Place in Unincorporated Boulder County. And I appreciate so many of the changes staff made to Article 12 over time, but I would like to call your attention to just a few items. First, I would like to suggest that you avoid using that phrase "unavoidable" in the standards in 12-1000, along with the phrase "sufficiently avoid, minimize, and mitigate." All impacts from oil and gas operations are avoidable in one way or another, whether through denial of permit or through conditions. If real harm to the public health and safety is unavoidable, then permits should be denied. In terms of that word "sufficiently," what level of harm is to be allowed? I suggest using the phrase "will avoid" in the standards. Consider our ozone levels and the impact of all wildfire smoke this year and last. Further degradation of our air qualities must simply be avoided completely, not just minimized. Likewise, whatever might lead to emergencies like explosions, fires, pipeline leaks, or the release of toxins must be avoided completely, not just minimized. Further, I also urge you to increase the setback distance to 2,500 feet. A 2,500-foot setback is actually on the lower end of the range of distances where research has found harmful health and quality of life impacts. As backup for that claim, my comments include a link to a review of the literature with numerous citations. I also urge you to include water in setbacks. Those endocrine-disrupting chemicals have been found in water sources one mile away from oil and gas operations. Don't let that happen here. And last for today, the county needs the ability to permanently revoke a permit in the case of egregious violations, failure to pay fines, remedy a situation in a timely fashion, or a situation where further operation of a well is a safety risk. Paying fines should not turn into the cost of doing business. There should be real teeth behind these regulations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Josh Lidske Lee. Next will be Kelly Bartel and Bruce Mansion after that.
Hi, my name is Josh Lidske Lee. I'm a part of Niwot High School's growing environmental club. I'm in the 10th grade, and I'm living at 829 Encourageable Circle. I've lived the big city life for 14 of my 15 years. Moving to Colorado to Boulder has given me a different perspective. Towering aspens and abundance of wildlife, my first true snowfall. Things I hadn't experienced before and things we need to protect. Fracking must be replaced with renewables. It's the smart choice, sustainable energy, so we can sustain ourselves and our Colorado. Boulder County should pave the way. Scientifically, fracking is bad news. Digging deep into our earth, pumping it with chemicals that poison people on the planet to get what? Natural gas, which heats the earth a little bit more. The proposed Creston project is three miles from a high school, our high school. Fracking emits cancer-inducing chemicals. We cannot afford to expose our students to that. Fumes and water pollution are just a couple of the issues Niwot High School students will have to face in the coming years, but everyone will have to face climate change. We are hurtling towards an inevitable climate disaster, and we need every single person on board to change course. Boulder County is known for its innovation. We are leaders when it comes to sustainability, with organizations such as the Colorado Community for Climate Action being initiated by us. Boulder County shouldn't stand back as we fry our planet in oil and natural gas. As part of Niwot High School's Environmental Club, I propose a ban on fracking in Boulder County. Boulder County should pave the way to renewable Colorado, not let the soon-to-be biggest fracking site in Colorado be built on the doorsteps of Niwot High School. Banning fracking in Colorado could have an impact on the economy or industry short term, but it will be nothing compared to the irreversible effects it has on our students and our planet long term. We can save our students, our people, and our planet. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Kelly Bartel? I don't think we have Kelly, right, Anna?
I do not see Kelly.
We'll circle back. Bruce Mansion? Also looks to be missing. Okay, Eve Bobino? Is Eve here?
Yes, hi. Do you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Eve Bobino. I'm a teacher at Niwot High School at 8989 Niwot Road, but I'm a resident of Boulder County at 984 Pine Lake Road. You know, I just wanted to commend the students in my school to speak and to really take this issue here to this commission and speak for the health and then the future of our planet. For me, I see my students thriving at that school, running on the trails, if they are part of a cross-country team or the football team. I see students walking, biking to school, and breathing this nice air. I drive every day, just enjoying this beautiful drive on Niwot Road every morning, enjoying the mist over the little streams. And I don't want that to go. I don't want to fear to have to go to my school and teach. I don't want to see my students getting sick or me getting sick. Ultimately, if fracking happens to that scale or happens at all in our school, for me, it means I need to go somewhere else. I wouldn't want to teach. And I wonder how many other students and families in the community will feel that way. And ultimately, are we giving priority to the people or just priority to a natural resource? This is something I wanted to bring to this commission. Thank you for your attention. Thank you for the work you're all doing.
Thank you for your comments. We're gonna pause and go back now to Lynn Segal to speak. Lynn, are you here?
Can you do some more first?
Sorry, do what first? Or just more people first? Okay, sure. We'll come back to you. Next on the list is Micah Parkin, who's pulling time with Judy LeBeau and Jennifer Fleming. Judy and Jennifer, I see, in the list. And Micah, are you here?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, you'll have six minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Hello, Planning Commission members and staff. I'm Micah Parkin, Executive Director of 350 Colorado. I live at 2861 Ellison Place in Boulder. We're 350 Colorado is a nonprofit with over 20,000 members statewide focused on solving the climate crisis and transitioning to a sustainable future. I'm one of a few people speaking today as a 350 Boulder County Team Leadership Council member, and I thank you for holding this hearing today to consider strengthening our protections against fracking. Boulder County, which is known for its beauty, progressive values, abundant open space, and efforts to fight climate change, is threatened by 140 oil and gas wells on public open-space land and a proposed fracking site that would be the largest in the state. This is coming at a time when our county is already coping with F-grade air quality due to high ozone levels that cause asthma in our children, heart attacks, dementia, and more. We're already being exposed to high levels of benzene and other VOCs and radioactive elements blowing over from the fracking in Weld County. We're coping with a respiratory pandemic that Harvard research says is worsened by pollution, and we're facing a climate crisis that's already impacting our county at a time when the International Panel on Climate Change says that we must transition rapidly off all fossil fuels largely within the next decade to meet the world's goal of keeping global temperature rise below 1.5 degrees Celsius and prevent the most devastating climate impacts worldwide. The vast majority of Boulder County residents find allowing fracking projects to proceed at all in our county to be fundamentally inconsistent with our many efforts to fight climate change, including the declaration of a climate emergency in 2019 and the ongoing lawsuit against Exxon and Suncor for climate change-related damages. In recent polling, 70% of Boulder County voters said they support a countywide fracking ban. Likewise, 70% of Boulder County residents voted in favor of Proposition 112 in 2018, which would have imposed 2,500-foot setbacks from fracking operations to homes, schools, water sources, and other sensitive locations, including open-space land, making the vast majority of the county off limits to fracking. Organizations and businesses representing over 130,000 Boulder County residents have signed a petition calling for a ban on fracking in Boulder County. The climate crisis, the coronavirus pandemic, and our current exposure to pollution from the 20,000-plus fracking wells in Weld County necessitate urgent action. Allowing fracking to proceed at all in Boulder County would be detrimental to our efforts to confront these critical challenges. According to Harvard research, higher pollution levels lead to worse COVID-19 outcomes, including death. As mentioned earlier, Boulder County already suffers F-grade air quality, according to the American Lung Association, with at least 40% of the pollution coming from fracking. Research from NASA and otherwise reveals that oil and gas production leads to the emission of high levels of methane, which has 84 times the global warming potential of carbon dioxide over a 20-year period. Research from Cornell, NASA, and Harvard have shown that the frightening spike in global methane over the last decade is from fracking in North America. Climate change is already contributing to natural disasters in Colorado, manifesting in more severe wildfire and more disruptive floods and droughts, and these effects will only intensify in the future. The carbon and methane emissions that would be associated with proposed wells, in addition to the impacts on the county's air and water quality, would overwhelm the county's efforts to reduce emissions. Research performed by Dr. Detlef Helmig, funded in part by Boulder County, has demonstrated that Boulder County's air quality is already adversely affected by oil and gas in Weld County, and oil and gas operations are a significant contributor to dangerous levels of carcinogenic benzene exposure and ozone. These excessive ozone levels already affect the health of Front Range residents, leading to higher rates of asthma, shortness of breath, and other respiratory conditions, heart attacks, strokes, dementia, and early death. Several attorneys have expressed their position that enacting a ban on fracking is now fully within the county's expanded authority under SB 181, which eliminated state preemption and regulation of oil and gas activities. The recent decision in the Longmont ban case is being appealed, citing concerns that the decision didn't fully consider the authority of SB 181 that it grants to counties and municipalities land use and zoning authority over fracking operations and the authority to safeguard public health and safety. We urge the Planning Commission to recommend that Boulder County Board of Commissioners enact a ban on fracking as soon as feasible to protect the health of its residents and prevent the associated emissions of greenhouse gases and air toxics. Boulder County residents want a ban on fracking. The current circumstances demand nothing less. In the meantime, enacting the most protective Article 12 rules and regulations possible are critical. Most importantly, we call for a non-wavable minimum 2,500-foot setback from all occupied buildings, water sources, recreation areas, and open-space land. The COGCC has already enacted 2,000-foot setbacks largely based on the CDPHE study last year that showed harm to people living up to 2,000 feet from oil and gas fracking sites. It's important to note, however, they did not study health impacts beyond 2,000 feet. So this begs the question, how much further would negative impacts have been observed? Numerous public health studies have shown grave harm well beyond 2,000 feet. We've sent the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners testimony from numerous researchers and doctors who have studied the health impacts of fracking and testified as expert witnesses before the COGCC this fall. They cite numerous serious detrimental impacts and say there is truly no safe distance from fracking and that 2,500 feet should be the bare minimum. So we urge the commission to include an absolute minimum of 2,500-foot setbacks with no waivers, and this should be from all occupied buildings, water sources, recreation areas, and open space, which taxpayers have supported and protected for decades and was not set aside for fossil fuel development. We also urge the commission to include clear provisions to deny and withdraw permits from oil and gas development if it's deemed inconsistent with our efforts to protect our health, environment, and global climate. Clear provisions to deny oil and gas development should also be included in our county's rules if fracking companies cannot prove they are financially viable. The fracking industry in aggregate has never had even one year of positive cash flow in aggregate. The industry is over $260 billion in debt, and they're largely considered zombie companies that have to entice new investors to take on new debt. I'll finish one sec. Scores of companies are going bankrupt across North America, leaving our community saddled with billions of debt and cleanup and recapping orphaned and abandoned wells. There's no doubt today's youth and future generations will wonder why we allowed over 80,000 wells across our state. It's past time for our county, state, and nation to set a new direction to 100% clean renewable energy. Thank you so much for your efforts.
Thank you for your comment. Next will be Amy Allen, and Amy has pulled time with Laura Zakowski. Laura, are you here as well? Or is Laura with you, Amy?
No, she isn't. I believe that she's in the meeting, but...
Okay, so you'll have two minutes, and she's not here? Okay, Laura says she is here in the chat, so you'll have four minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Amy Allen. I live at 2935 College in Boulder, and I'm a board member of 350 Colorado, a nonprofit representing over 20,000 Coloradans. In light of the climate crisis, the ongoing respiratory health pandemic, and the severely degraded air quality on the Front Range, Boulder County can and should implement a ban on fracking, as well as the most protective possible regulations as a backstop. Thanks to county staff for preparing their revisions to Article 12 and your interest in prioritizing public health, the climate, and air and water quality. I will expound on some areas for further improvement in the interest of these objectives. Article 12 should prohibit permitting while the Front Range remains in nonattainment of the National Ambient Air Quality Standard for ozone and prohibit emissions of air toxics such as benzene. Research has demonstrated that Boulder County's air quality is adversely affected by oil and gas operations in Weld County and that oil and gas operations are a significant contributor to excessive levels of ozone on the Front Range. In Article 12, a threshold for allowable emissions of particulate matter should be defined based on the ample body of scientific evidence assessing the effects of PM on public health. In assessing a permit application, Article 12 should require the Board of Commissioners to consider the cumulative effects of the expected greenhouse gas emissions and other air and water polluting emissions associated with the permit in the context of the existing pollution burden in the county, including that resulting from oil and gas operations in neighboring counties, and the need articulated in a recent IPCC report for a rapid phase-out of carbon emissions largely over the next decade to revert catastrophic global temperature rise. Additionally, Article 12 should require that all power provided to oil and gas operations be supplied by renewables on an annual basis, being net-zero energy for electricity, and require that all onsite equipment be electrically powered. Article 12 should be structured to affirmatively protect public health, safety, and welfare, and the environment. Section 12-1000 states that our proposal meets the standards if it will either avoid adverse impacts to public health, safety, and welfare, or through imposition of conditions of approval sufficiently minimize and mitigate unavoidable impact. Oil and gas operations must be required to avoid adverse impacts to public health, safety, and welfare, and the environment entirely, and not simply minimize impacts. All of the discretionary conditions listed in Section 12-1100 should be implemented as mandatory, including prohibitions on venting or flaring of natural gas, requirements for ongoing water quality monitoring and continuous monitoring of leaks, requirements for tankless operations which reduce air emissions, especially those of VOCs, requirements for ongoing air quality monitoring, and the requirement for closed-loop pitless drilling systems to facilitate reuse of produced water. Controlling emissions of methane is essential. Controlling emissions of methane is essential, as it has 86 times the GWT of CO2 over a 20-year period. And a recent study published in Nature concluded that estimates of anthropogenic methane emissions to which oil and gas operations are a prime contributor are likely 20 to 40% higher than previously thought. And preliminary reports from NOAA show that methane levels in the atmosphere from 2018 to 2019 showed the largest annual increase in the last eight years. I urge you to further strengthen Article 12 by making all discretionary conditions mandatory and requiring that all impacts to public health, air and water quality, and the climate be avoided, and not simply minimized. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Gabrielle Katz pulling time with Lon Goldstein. He already checked in. Gabrielle?
Gabrielle Katz. I live at 4738 Ipswich Street. We are speaking on behalf of the Lookout Alliance, a grassroots community group comprised of residents of Gunbarrel, Heatherwood, and Nywhet communities in unincorporated Boulder County. Our goal is to protect ourselves and all communities from the harmful impacts of oil and gas exploration and production. In November 2018, many homeowners in Heatherwood received letters sent on behalf of Extraction Oil and Gas Incorporated requesting to lease our oil and gas minerals. In Colorado, letters like these are just the first step in a process that has almost always led to drilling, despite local opposition and even without the consent of many of the mineral owners whose property is being taken. As of now, it appears that the company has not filed any formal plans for new, new drilling in our county, but the groundwork has been laid. On top of that, Boulder County is currently threatened with a massive drilling project proposed for Highway 52 near Nywhet. This project would include 140 wells clustered at three sites, all on protected Boulder County open space. While the project is informally on hold at the state level, it is officially in process, according to the COGCC website. This is a stressful situation for us and honestly should provoke anxiety in all Boulder County residents. Modeling studies have shown that a project of this size would create devastating impacts to Boulder County air quality. It would also cause significant adverse impacts to wildlife, the environment, and of course, our climate. The Lookout Alliance supports a ban on all fracking in Boulder County, but we also urge you to adopt the strongest regulations possible as a backstop. We thank the Boulder County staff for crafting the revisions to Article 12. The revised regulations contain many good components, which will hopefully go a long way towards protecting our communities and our environment from the dangers of fracking. That said, there are some important ways the rules could be strengthened. Number one, we urge you to expand the list of no-go areas that are off limits to drilling. These should include all open space properties and conservation easements. They should also include riparian areas and wetlands and all high priority habitats defined by Colorado Parks and Wildlife as a minimum standard. In Section 12,1,000, please remove the weakening language that allows drilling in floodplains, geo-hazard areas, and other ostensibly off-limits places when there is no way to avoid them. Throughout Section 12,1,000, all of the weakening language that says "oil and gas facilities and operations will sufficiently avoid, minimize, and mitigate impacts" should be strengthened. What do we mean by sufficient? I want to be assured that my health, safety, and welfare will be protected, including my right to clean air and water, a quiet environment, dark skies, and healthy ecosystems. Number four, setbacks. Buffer should be expanded based on the best available science. Drilling should not be allowed within 2,500 feet of all occupied structures, open space, and water resources. In Section 12,900, the characteri- characterization of noise levels in the baseline report should be conducted in such a way as to remove or avoid airplane noise. There's been an outcry lately in eastern Boulder County regarding the increased airplane noise coming from small planes utilizing the Boulder Municipal Airport, Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport, and the Longmont Airport. We should not work from the premise that existing ambient noise represents an acceptable noise level in the Wattenberg area. Thank you very much for considering our comments. It is not hyperbole to say that these rules are a life and death matter to Boulder County residents. While Gunbarrel, Heatherwood, and Nywhet are in the crosshairs of fracking, this issue affects everyone. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next will be Mitzi Nicoletti for two minutes, and Deborah McNamara will be after that. And Mitzi, if you're here, if you can unmute.
Hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Mitzi Nicoletti. I live at 1261 Button Rock Drive, Longmont. I'm speaking today as part of a coalition of organizations calling for a ban on fracking in Boulder County. I live in Longmont near Union Reservoir, where there are two new active oil and gas fracking sites. I enjoy Union Reservoir for my recreation, as well as the trout systems in the area. Because our air quality is so severely compromised over the last two years, I've been forced to be careful when I choose to go outside to enjoy these recreational areas. I rely almost daily on the City of Longmont's air quality website with the data from monitoring by Boulder Air for the most updated information on our air quality. It has been increasingly concerning to see nightly spikes in oil and gas emissions, including methane, volatile organic compounds such as benzene, along with spikes in particulates. Ozone levels have also, on many, many days throughout the summer, been in non-attainment of EPA health standards. More than 50 years of scientific studies have shown the harmful effects of ozone as one of the most important air pollutants. Breathing air with elevated ozone irritates the respiratory system and can cause acute and chronic respiratory cardiovascular health effects. People with asthma, children, and elderly are particularly at increased risk. Recent studies have also shown elevated radiation levels near U.S. hydraulic fracking drilling sites. New studies have shown that having these pollutants in the air during the COVID-19 pandemic makes unhealthy situations even worse. I would like to see fracking sites at least 2,500 feet from recreation areas, open spaces, waterways, schools, and residential areas. I'm urging you to pass the strongest possible regulations on oil and gas operations as a backup to any potential legal challenges to ban, to a ban. With the recent fires in Colorado, this is just another reminder of the imbalances in nature, and the oil and gas industry contributes heavily to those imbalances. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next will be Deborah McNamara, and she's pulled time with Paige Henshaw. She has four minutes.
Thank you. My name is Deb McNamara. I live at 1889 Yarmouth in Boulder, Colorado, and I work with 350 Colorado, representing over 20,000 Coloradans. I'm here today because I'm also concerned about public health and safety, our environment, our declining air and water quality, and also about the impacts of climate change. I'm, however, going to direct my comments today on the need for a minimum of 2,500-foot setbacks from occupied structures, recreation areas, and open space land to be reflected in Article 12 regulations. My primary, my primary call to the Commission is for the sake of climate, clean air, and communities, we need to be doing everything we can to put the brakes on fracking. Especially in this time of unprecedented health concern, our county needs to focus on protecting the health of our families. We should not be distracted by having to respond to new oil and gas proposals in or near our communities. We should be focused on adopting the strongest possible safeguards for Colorado's health, environment, and safety. Thank you for the robust work done thus far. I urge this Commission to require a mandatory minimum setback of 2,500 feet between oil and gas operations and occupied structures, rec areas, and open space. Making this a part of Article 12 regulations will ensure that our public health and the environment is more adequately protected, even though our preference would be for a ban on fracking altogether. Firstly, I'd like to reference the 2019 CDPH study that shows significant negative health impacts up to 2,000 feet. While 2,000-foot setbacks may be a start in offering some protection for Coloradans, this is not enough. We call for the minimum 2,500 feet, citing thousands of peer-reviewed studies showing negative health impacts of oil and gas at over 2,000 feet. The CDPH study, of course, highlights major issues of concern, the emitting of benzene and ethyltolylen, known carcinogens, and the presence of elevated levels of benzene in the blood of residents living near oil and gas operations, and the associated toxicity associated with this exposure. As you, as we all know, health experts are warning that even short-term benzene exposure is posing health risks, including headaches, nosebleeds, dizziness, treasures, confusion, tremors, confusion, unconsciousness. And I'll actually, in the interest of time, I won't list them all. I know that you are all very aware. Of course, aside for the CDPH study, there are thousands of peer-reviewed studies showing correlations between fracking and negative health impacts, and many of them are citing beyond 2,000 feet. Researchers have analyzed hundreds of peer-reviewed studies of the impacts of fracking and found that 84% of public health studies contain findings that indicate health hazards, elevated risks, or adverse health outcomes. We have enough evidence at this point to support the minimum 2,500-foot setback. We encourage this Commission to review all of the science and data highlighting these health impacts. The numerous studies have linked fracking not only, well, to the harm in public health, but also an increased risk of congenital heart defects among children born to women living near oil and gas operations in Colorado, with the risk of increasing, with the risk increasing with the density of oil and gas activities within a 10-mile radius. And I will email the Commission with all of the sources for the research that I'm citing here. According to a 2018 study on shale gas development and infant health from Pennsylvania, E. Hill showed that, showed reduced cognitive performance in infants born to mothers living within 8,500 feet of a fracking well, 8,500 feet. Based on a review of existing scientific literature, a 2017 study also concluded that a 2,500-foot setback recommendation is on the lower end of the range of distances where research has determined harmful health and quality of life impacts of toxic emissions and exposures. Therefore, Article 12 should be revised to require a setback of at least 2,500-foot feet between oil and gas operations and any structure intended for human occupancy, open space, and water sources. Furthermore, a large body of academic literature has characterized serious effects on human health and life expectancy from air pollution, including a recent study that identified air pollution as a contributor to 8.8 million deaths annually, identifying it as one of the main global health risks. Additionally, exposure to air pollution has been linked to higher rates of mortality from viral infectious diseases. The American Lung Association lists reducing emissions from existing and new oil and gas operations as one of the key actions that Colorado can take. We thank the Commission for all of the work thus far and appreciate everything you're doing to make these the most stringent regulations possible. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, next will be Sarah Hirsch. I think we're missing Sarah. Is that right, Anna?
That's correct.
Okay, well, we'll circle back. Leslie Weiss, and then Fiona will be next, and Hannah after that.
Hi. Hi, my name is Leslie Weiss. You can hear me?
Yes.
I live at 7578 Crestwood Drive in eastern Boulder County, near the Weld County border. With the knowledge of the toxins that pass through our neighborhood from Weld County as monitored from Boulder County's own monitoring station, I'm concerned every day about the health and safety impacts from Weld County, from oil and gas operations, and am even more extremely concerned that extraction on gas wants to add 140 more wells just two miles from our home. My mother recently passed from cancer. We have a special needs child in our home with high-risk respiratory and heart issues. I'd also love to give a shout out to all the Nywhet High School kids that spoke today. We have an obligation to take these kids seriously and hear their concerns, and I hope you will do so. We are all fearful. We live right in the front lines of the pollution from these oil and gas wells. Despite the heroic efforts by staff to update the regulations, I'm here to suggest that they don't go far enough. They've taken a fearful approach. They need to go further. What I'd like to request specifically to you today is to give feedback to them that no new emissions may be allowed from any new oil and gas operations. Greenhouse gas emissions come from these operations, carcinogens, and ozone-producing emissions of methane and nitrous oxides. We have a climate emergency. We have an ozone emergency and a cancer emergency, as everyone is aware, needs no context. We do not need any new emissions of these three categories, and they cannot be allowed. SB 181 requires you, as commissioners, require our government to protect us from unsafe oil and gas operations, and we know these emissions are harmful. So, another specific thing is before is to avoid these impacts, not just minimize and mitigate. Those are the two most high-level recommendations I would love for you to focus on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Fiona?
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Lovely. My name is Fiona Nugent. I am 17 years old, and I am also a member of Nowa High School's Environmental Club. On behalf of the club, I'd like to say thank you to everyone who has amplified our thoughts this evening. My address is 8178 Dry Creek Circle, Nywhet, Colorado, and I'm in the 3rd District of Boulder County. There's an old saying, "The only way to eat an elephant is one bite at a time." We'll try this one on for size. "The only way to kill the earth is one fossil fuel plant at a time." Natural gas, which fracking falls under, is a type of fossil fuel, according to the U.S. Energy Information Administration. Fossil fuels are considered the greatest threat to our climate. Therefore, not only should the Crestone project be prohibited from being built, but fracking should be banned across the county. If this fracking site is allowed to proceed, how long will people want to stay in Boulder County? Once our water becomes contaminated with toxic chemicals? Or once the rate of high-risk pregnancies and cancer increases? Or once our air quality hits even lower lows? Such changes won't be good for our local economy or our health. Earlier this evening, a COGCC representative argued earlier that, quote, "Any regulations must be reasonable and necessary," unquote. This implies that the proposed regulation does not qualify as reasonable or necessary. As someone who is unable to step outside this summer due to the air quality, who lives three miles away from this proposed fracking site, and who fears the way climate, the climate crisis will define the rest of my life, I fail to see any instance in which these strictest regulations are not, quote, "reasonable and necessary." I'm glad that the county can file suit against the COGCC if it fails to enforce its own rules. This is because the COGCC does not have a good track record. While the new COGCC rules do require that oil and gas operations report the amount of greenhouse gases emitted, and that is progress, they do not issue consequences depending on what number goes in that field. There is no point in requiring that oil and gas companies report the damage that they do to the environment if there are no consequences. Please enact a county-wide ban on fracking. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Hannah Lindstad is next.
Hi, my name's Hannah Lindstad. I'm an emergency medicine physician speaking on behalf of Physicians for Social Responsibility Colorado. I'm at 1975 19th Street in Denver. PSR Colorado works to elevate the voice of health professionals to help protect present and future generations from the negative health impacts of hydraulic fracturing, the climate crisis, and exposures to radionuclides and other toxic substances. We are asking that the Boulder County Commissioners put in place a minimum 2,500-foot setback from all occupied buildings, water sources, recreation areas, and open space land. Hydraulic fracturing has significant health consequences, many of which are related to the proximity and density of oil and gas operations to individuals and communities. Studies have shown that populations in closer proximity to oil and gas operations are more likely to develop a wide variety of medical problems. Pregnant women near areas with active drilling have an increased likelihood of having infants with low birth weight and preterm birth, which can lead to long-term developmental disabilities, respiratory diseases, and neurological problems. Close proximity to oil and gas production and exposure to high-density areas may also increase likelihood of congenital heart defects, neural tube defects, which can cause devastating brain and spinal cord problems, as well as certain blood cancers like leukemia. Density of fracking sites also causes worsening cases of asthma requiring medical care, cardiovascular disease and hospitalizations, neurologic issues, kidney stones and infections, and cancers. It's clear that proximity to oil and gas operations impact health. We therefore believe that in developing and adopting a policy for regulating oil and gas in Colorado, a 2,500-foot setback should be considered as a baseline to protect public health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have a pool of people I think who like to speak separately. Dana Bove, Theo Kuhn, and Georgia Anderson. You all have two minutes unless you'd like to pull. Let's start with Dana.
Is there any if I start?
Sure, go ahead.
Great. My name's Theo Kuhn. I live at 2815 West 42nd Avenue in Denver. My name's Theo Kuhn. I live at 2815 West 42nd Avenue in Denver, and I'll be speaking on behalf of Front Range Nesting Bald Eagle Studies. Our group has been rigorously studying bald eagle nests and communal roosts in the Northern Front Range for over five years. Many of our field sites are along Boulder Creek, just across the border in Western Weld County, about a mile from Crestone's planned development program on Boulder County open space land. We frequently witness the impact of oil and gas development on wildlife. We've been directly involved with COGCC's rulemaking process from the start. We feel that our experience and expertise gives us a unique perspective on which to comment on Boulder County's oil and gas draft plan and to offer our input on how to craft language that will protect wildlife and natural resources throughout the county. I'd like to first address Section 12900 on application submittal requirements with a specific focus on wildlife and natural resource issues. The draft plan's requirement to map wildlife and natural resources within one mile of a proposed facility is a positive first step in identifying potential impacts to important species and ecosystems in Boulder County under B-11 and 13. But in order to best implement this requirement, we would like to recommend two sources to consider while mapping wildlife and natural resources. The first set of species that should be considered are those designated as Species of Greatest Conservation Need in the Colorado State Wildlife Action Plan, or SWAP. Those are the Tier 1 and Tier 2 species in SWAP. And then, an additional resource to consider while mapping wildlife is Boulder County's own Wildlife Species of Special Concern list, and we've provided a link to that list in our written comments. Thank you for providing the opportunity to comment on the draft plan. I'd like to now pass it on to the leader of our group, Dana Bove.
Go ahead, Dana.
I'm down there as Georgia. Are you hearing me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Oh, good. Okay, so this is Dana Bovey. I live at 1935 Tin Cup Court in Boulder 80305. And I'll finish up upon what Theo was covering in regard to application requirement comments. So, oil and gas applicants are also required to obtain an independent experts evaluation of potential impacts to wildlife and natural resources. Our comments include, "More information and details are required on the depth of experience of the experts and the scope and nature of the reports." Number two, too much attention has been focused on evaluation of the actual drilling sites and paths. Reports and actual field sites by these experts need to include evaluation assessment of all foreseeable directed and indirect impacts from all phases of oil and gas development, or as we call it, cradle to grave. Our group studies show that some of the most significant impacts to wildlife and natural resources by oil and gas development are activities related to fracking. Our group has studied bald eagle nests and roosts during a number of off-site pipeline projects. Our studies demonstrate that these projects are extremely impactful on nesting and roosting eagles. My hope is that you've received the two figures that go along with our comments. The first shows the industrial scale disturbance associated with extractions Pipeline to Hub Project in 2018. This is just about a tenth of a mile from the bald eagle nest in the background of Figure 1. The second figure is a graphic from our data. The crosshatched area is where construction occurred. The dots in the crosshatched area are critical hunting and fishing perches for the nesting eagles at that nest. During the two-month construction project, these critical hunting sites were never used by the nesting eagles. In addition to noise, light, dust, and roads, we found that post-drilling activities that include the shut-in of older vertical wells in response to nearby multi-well horizontal drilling have also had a great negative effect on wildlife. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. And then next would be Georgia.
Yes, my name is Georgia, and I live at 249 Bowen Street in Longmont, Colorado. And I am speaking on behalf of Front Range Nesting Bald Eagles. I have been a staff member of theirs for the last five years and have had the great opportunity to observe these wildlife in the Weld County area. Some comments that we would like to speak upon is oil and gas development with respect to wildlife and natural resources have had very few restrictions. Boulder County must protect wildlife and natural resources, including rules that list actual avoidance or no-go areas that pertain to all phases for oil and gas development. Boulder County's oil and gas rules need to include wildlife buffers that include all of CPW's 2019 High Priority Habitat Guidelines as a minimum standard. These buffers and seasonal closures need to apply to all phases of oil and gas development: well pads, pipelines, roads, lighting, and finally, noise. Boulder County must establish significant buffers around wetlands and riparian areas. We suggest a minimum of 2,000 feet. In the 12,000th Special Review Standards, there is weakening language that may allow for insufficient protection. Here, it is stated that oil and gas facilities and operations will sufficiently avoid, minimize, and mitigate adverse impacts to natural resources, with similar wording for wildlife. I will continue to commit my time to a future that prioritizes wildlife, and I urge that oil and gas facilities and operations will avoid adverse impacts to wildlife and natural resources and abide by stated CPW 2019 HPH buffers for listed species. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Could I go next, Anna?
Sure, Lynn, go ahead.
Wait, I have the Transportation Advisory Board next. Sorry, I was dozing off. I was still.
That's okay. If you can give your full, your full name and address, that'd be great.
But yeah, as you can see, it's very functional to wear this lovely hat. It comes from Looney that on the first block on the Pearl Street Mall, just west, just east of Lamont. And you can wear these in the house. It works really good. And you can also do this. And it works good. And I'm not going to get solar on my place until we municipalize. That'll probably be 2025 now, but maybe 2024 if Excel fails their emission standards. My dad was an air pollution control monitoring expert. My mom died of leukemia. Could have been the benzene, but I think it was from Rocky flats because we lived in Denver in 1957. So I'm not big on benzene personally for my family. It was like very devastating. So I'm all for the precautionary principle. I really liked it. And I think that these days it's peculiarly relevant because we have the virus now. And I spent like two and a half hours today on the phone. I haven't been to the doctor in like 30 years, but they sent me a thing that I can get $50 of a free gift card if I go to the doctor. So two and a half hours. Oh, there's a lot of demand for health things. So I think the best thing is to reduce the demand for health issues going on. And meantime, we have more than enough ability to get what we need from solar. Also, there's something new, solar thermal. Like you use a wind, a vertical wind turbine. Yeah, they're using them on irrigation channels to. Many of things that we don't need gas anymore.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thanks.
All right, Eric Tussi is next, and then Theron and Bethany after that.
Hi, my name is Eric Tussi. I live 5075 North 51st Street in Boulder. I have two minutes, so I'll try to focus quickly. I do want to tell you guys quickly that I have asthma. It's been a lot worse in the last few years since Weld County's just gone crazy with the fracking. Fracking is basically a big form of human-caused climate change. Regulation is legalizing the poisoning of our air, public air, our public water, our aquifers. I'm not sure how you clean up an aquifer. Let us know if you guys have any, any, you know, ideas on that because fracking really needs to be banned, not regulated. One thing I wanted to mention, I've sent you guys some information earlier. There's a 17-year study that Harvard released in October studying 150 radiation monitoring sites in the east. And they noted that within 12 miles, not 2,000 feet, but 12 miles, radiation from broken uranium deep underground, the gases come out of fracking pipes, and the back, and the radiation is 40% higher than background radiation. It also noted that they, which we're all aware of, chemicals are released into the groundwater. I'm not sure how you clean up an aquifer. If you guys have a plan for that, you may want to, you know, make that a requirement for companies to have that system in place. We appreciate your five-day-a-week effort shifting, shifting the regulations. But I think the best thing that we need to do as a county is to establish home rule, get a community bill of rights to protect us and the natural world because every bit of the fracking and the fossil fuels that come out of this are setting us back with our carbon goals. Lafayette just extended their moratorium six months because with SB 181, the rules keep changing from the Colorado Oil and Gas Commission. I'm sure the rules you guys have put in place are very stringent, but they're not adequate. The real, the real request is to ban fracking and get ourselves as one of the most educated counties in the country to do that instead of precedent. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Theron Harino?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Theron Harino. I live at 7462 Mount Sherman Road. That's in unincorporated Boulder County in Gun Barrel. I'd like to make some comments about the regulatory process and what that means. The Senate Bill 181 was designed to create an illusion of protecting the health and safety of Coloradans through regulations, while the true intent is to allow for the continued proliferation of oil and gas activity in Colorado. Ultimately, what regulations are the legalized harm of a community, or it's legalizing harm of a community by industry. Or in other words, the negotiated surrender of a community's rights to protect itself from the harmful effects of oil and gas extraction. While the long-term solution to the oil and gas problem has been a paradigm shift away from our current unsustainable practices that harm communities and towards local self-government, in the near term, the goal of our community, Boulder County, should be to prevent the current county commissioners from passing these updates to the county's oil and gas regulations and thus opening up the county to drilling. It's sort of insane to me that in a year where we're having a pandemic, followed by nearly two to three months of some of the worst air quality I've seen from wildfires that have been burning up in the hills above us, now that the wildfires seem to be past us and the pandemic is still going on, we're talking about regulating oil and gas drilling in Boulder County when everyone that's spoken tonight has provided numerous examples of why you cannot regulate this industry and make it safe. The Physicians for Social Responsibility, I believe some from that group spoke tonight, have pretty much said you cannot make this activity safe. So I hope the planning commission will take everyone's comments tonight to heart and pass those along to the commissioners when you start meeting with them tomorrow about this issue. And I appreciate having the time to talk. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, moving along. Next will be Bethany Collins.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Good evening, Planning Commission. This is Bethany Collins. I'm the real estate supervisor for City of Boulder Open Space and Mountain Parks, and we're located at 2520 55th Street in Boulder. The city appreciates the county staff's incredible effort to assemble a robust set of regulations to protect public health, safety, and welfare, and the environment and wildlife. I'm here tonight to voice a quick request by the city that we also submitted in our referral comments earlier this year. As a significant landowner within unincorporated Boulder County, the city requests that the county apply the same agency referral and advisory board referral processes proposed under 12-800K when oil and gas operations or facilities are proposed on or near city-owned lands. The city requests the county supplement this section to include that if the proposed oil and gas facility or oil and gas operation is on or within 1,500 feet of city of Boulder-owned land, even where not jointly held in FE or CE with the county, upon referral to the city, the Open Space and Mountain Parks Director or other managing department may refer the application to the Open Space Board of Trustees or other appropriate advisory board and/or city council for a public hearing. OSBT, or the appropriate advisory board or city council, may forward recommendations for assuring the protection of the city-owned land, including environmental, ecological, wildlife, historical, archaeological, and agricultural resources, which may include recommendations to deny the application or to modify the location or density of the oil and gas facility. These recommendations will be considered and balanced with other interests identified and recommendations made during the cumulative impacts analysis by the Director of Community Planning and Permitting and the Board of County Commissioners during the special review process. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. We're going to loop back now to Kelly Bartel, who wasn't able to speak earlier. Kelly, are you here?
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Hi, thanks. My name's Kelly Bartel, and I live at 563 West Cedar Place, Lewisville, Colorado. I just wanted to voice my absolute opposition to fracking in Boulder County and hoping that we can take a stand for the rest of Colorado as well. I am a permaculture designer and organic gardener in here. Most of my clients are in Lafayette and Boulder and Lewisville. And so I spend a lot of time outside and in very intimate relationship with the plants. And I'm very concerned about how quickly climate change is presenting itself. You know, this year, there were almost three months of over 90-degree weather. Last year, last summer, there were about two weeks that were over 90 degrees. And the summer before that, it was several days. Our temperature is climbing rapidly. I think we all know here that our forests are drying out and burning. I just, there's absolutely, it's absolute insanity to me to be even considering using our fresh water to frac oil and gas to put more noxious chemicals into the air and dry out our climate further. I think it's, it's suicide. And Boulder County is such a beautiful, beautiful land. We have so much to be grateful for, and I think that it's our responsibility to protect it with everything that we have. I'm absolutely opposed, and I ask you to do everything within your power to prevent any and all fracking in Boulder County and in Colorado. I'm also a mother of four children, and I feel like it is our responsibility to figure out how to have a sane and clean energy, like a system of energy that is not vampiring the planet, that it's our responsibility now to figure it out, not to just kind of well, crack for 20 years because it's easy, and then leave it to our kids to figure it out later. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next will be Giselle Hertzfeld, pulled with Sylvie Chevalier. I think you're both here, and Giselle, you're speaking. You'll have four minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Giselle Hertzfeld, and I'm speaking today on behalf of 350 Colorado. And I just posted my address in the chat. Thank you for hearing my comment today. Today, I will be speaking on the financial state of the oil and gas industry in light of the economic crisis our state is currently facing. I'm sure you are well aware that oil and gas companies across the United States have been filing bankruptcy at an alarming rate. As the industry continues to collapse, RISED energy analysts have even predicted that nearly 250 oil and gas companies could file bankruptcy by the end of next year. Wolf Richter wrote this year that in 2020 alone, there have been 88 bankruptcy filings by the US oil and gas sector, totaling $89 billion in debt, and that Colorado ranks the fifth highest state in the US for number of bankruptcy filings by the oil and gas industry since 2015. These bankruptcy filings are due to recent dramatic drops in the global prices of oil and gas. The price of US natural gas has been steadily collapsing since 2008, falling $11.7 billion per million BTU between 2008 and 2020. And one startling example of the dire financial situation of the industry at the end of April 2020. In one startling example of the dire financial situation of the industry, at the end of April twenty twenty, the May futures contract for US crude oil dropped to negative thirty-seven dollars per barrel. But more troubling than that, it has been a common practice for oil and gas companies to pay millions of dollars in bonuses to their top executives immediately prior to filing bankruptcy. For example, prior to filing bankruptcy, MDC Energy paid their chief executive eight point five million dollars. Whiting Petroleum paid their top executives fifteen million dollars and Denver's own extraction oil and gas paid their top officers and employees a total of six point seven million dollars three days before filing bankruptcy. When the industry opts to pay these massive bonuses to their executives, they simultaneously cut corners in the cleanup and maintenance of their wells, both operating and abandoned. Oil and gas companies are required by law to have sufficient capital reserves to fully clean up their orphaned wells. Yet with their poor financial track record and bankruptcy filings, it is highly unlikely that they do in fact have sufficient reserves on hand to properly clean up their orphaned wells. A report by Carbon Tracker estimates that the cost to clean up one modern shale well is around three hundred thousand dollars. It has been estimated that Denver's extraction oil and gas would need over two hundred million to properly clean up its one thousand wells. However, if oil and gas companies stop being able to extract profits from their wells and file bankruptcy, it is unlikely they will be able to produce the legally required hundreds of millions of dollars necessary to properly clean up their wells. Neglecting to close orphaned wells or closing them improperly is not an option. Orphaned wells spew methane and other toxic pollutants into the atmosphere, endangering surrounding communities and accelerating the rate of climate disaster. If oil and gas companies can't foot the bill for their mess, that cost will fall onto taxpayers either with a massive financial burden or with polluted air, earth and water in their communities. According to a New York Times article written earlier this year, across the US, there are more than three million abandoned wells, two thirds of which are still unplugged and leaking methane equivalent to the annual emission of one point five million cars. Research from NASA, Cornell and Harvard show that there has been a global spike in methane over the last decade that is largely due to fracking in the US. Instead of continuing to prop up this industry and approve permits for new wells, we should be trying to ensure that oil and gas companies can deal responsibly with the wells they already have. It is important that new regulations specifically address the financial concerns of the industry and require strong financial assurances that the industry will properly and sufficiently maintain their existing wells and clean up and close orphaned and abandoned wells. Regulations need specific standards on well maintenance and it should be a direct violation to cut back on maintenance. The financial burden of maintaining wells cannot fall onto taxpayers in an already struggling economy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next will be Marty Pfeffer with two minutes. Marty, are you here?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Marty Pfeffer. I live at one hundred Sandler Drive in Lafayette. I want to voice my opposition to continuing regulations of oil and gas development in Boulder County. The only safe and sustainable relationship to extraction is to refuse to allow it. Moderating a harmful thing might provide some protection, but saying no altogether is complete protection. Regulation will only say to the extraction industry that we are willing to live with some poisoning, but not the power to say none at all. We are being persuaded to open a door we don't want to open while being told it's not that bad. You can control it. It's good for the economy. It's good for the party. That's called gaslighting and justifies abuse and the trauma that comes from it. You want to be complicit in enabling that for your constituents? That's called being corrupted. Recognition of a danger for its citizens and to not allow it is obviously the wise choice for a governing body. But there are other, are there other forces at play that may not be so obvious? Such as satisfying the Colorado Oil and Gas Association that the Democratic Party hierarchy will confuse their constituents into accepting industry with empty regulations for health and safety in exchange for supporting the party's political dominance in Colorado. For the citizens of Boulder County to simply be a figure in that equation is a dangerous way to live. We face the same reality with climate and environmental catastrophe with the same root cause. When do we finally and fully accept the facts of our condition and say, no more? We can't continue to use fossil fuels, prop up industry, feed bankrupt politics and survive. It may never be considered legal in an unjust system of law, but what is the greater consequence? Lawsuits or extinction? The choices start where we live. Banning oil and gas development in Boulder County and refusal to regulate would be a legal challenge to the principal impediment to municipalities to actually be able to prevent or to represent the welfare of their citizens, the instrument of preemption. Imagine its removal and the phrase, our hands are tied, no longer be heard, nor be a reality for well intentioned but frustrated city councillors and county commissioners. Consider all the implications of your decision from the macro level of global existence as a species to the micro level of the rights of individuals and communities. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next will be Tonya Briggs.
Up, up, there we go. Hi.
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Alrighty, so my name's Tonya Briggs. I reside at three oh five East Lucerne Drive in Lafayette. I'm actually a city council member for the city of Lafayette, though I am calling as a Boulder County resident. As a public servant, I know that the community members want a ban. Yes, I said that dirty little word, ban. Over the years, Boulder County and the city of Lafayette have extended the moratorium on many bases. And the Martinez case, one eighty-one, how is COGC going to react to one eighty-one? By the way, they're not done. They're still having hearings and have not completely adopted the regulations based off one eighty-one. So the fact that we're even here tonight, we're completely putting the cart before the horse. It's baffling to me, honestly. And then there's that big looming question, does one eighty-one allow a ban? Right? That's what all our community members want, a ban. And we don't have those answers yet. To me, it only makes sense to continue to kick that moratorium can down the road, extend the moratorium and find out ways to actually create a ban. Um, Boulder County is not the last community to adopt regulations. And as environmental leaders of the state of Colorado, we should be the last to give in. If listening to my fellow speakers have said, nothing else, it's clear we can do better. The regulations written are not good enough, but the fact is that you cannot safely regulate the oil and gas activity. There's nothing that you can do to regulate it correctly. You're going to admit dangerous chemicals in the air, in the environment, in our water, no matter what regulations you put on it. So I asked today that you do something bold, you make a stand, you vote on the side of safety, you vote on the side of people and you ban oil and gas activity. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next will be James Duncan.
Thank you. My name is James Duncan. I live at twenty-three seventy-five Panorama Avenue. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Just returned, by the way. I just returned from a trip down to Alamosa to drop off water tanks. We dropped off fifty water tank, cubic water tanks to the Native Americans, the Navajo's down there because their groundwater has been contaminated by mining uranium. I just want to let you know that. My comments are going to be particularly directed to the youth from this meeting and others, not so much the commissioners, because I know that your hands are sort of tied by that regulations and so forth. By the way, regulations, the history, there are, they are written by the companies, the corporations that they are ostensibly supposed to regulate. So that's the watching the chicken house. So what I like to do to the, to the address of the kids is to check out a movement that protects the rights of communities, individuals and nature. It bucks the system that we have now. I know you're learning this system, so please look into the history of how, why our our system is so perverse and corrupt. And this movement is called community rights. You can think of community rights as opposed to corporate rights. So it writes should actually belong to the communities and there's a lot to that. Please check out the website, CLBF, C L B F dot org. That's Stanford Community Environmental Legal Defense Fund dot org and also communityrights.us. Those are two outstanding resources for this movement that's going to give power to the people. It's a nonviolent collective resistance from this.
Thank you for your comments. All right, our last sign of speakers, Anne Burrell. I know, I think Anne had to leave. Anne, are you still here? And she commented that she had to leave Anna. So I think that's it unless we have Sarah Hirsch, Bruce Mansion or Maria Conroy. None of whom I think have appeared. Is there anyone else who's in the meeting who would like to speak, who hasn't signed up yet? You can sign up in the chat if you'd still like to speak.
Chair Libby, this is Anna Milner. Staff, just reminding those on the phone, if you have not signed up and you'd like to speak, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine to let us know. Thank you.
All right, hearing none and seeing no further comments, I'm going to close the public hearing. And we'll be adjourning today's meeting until tomorrow's public meeting at four PM, where we'll have discussion and questions for staff and other representatives. I just want to thank everyone for their comments today from the public. Thanks staff for the presentation. And we'll see you all tomorrow. Was there any other comments from staff? I think we're all set.
That's it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.